Shot from behind in broad daylight here at the gated entrance of his apartment complex, the crime scene now adorned with flowers and other tributes. Adding to the community's outrage were a series of shootings that took place not far from here, just six days earlier. Twenty-seven-year-old Justin Aguilar was shot and killed at nearby Woodbine Park on Thursday, April 16th. Police have arrested three suspects, one of them now charged with murder. Minutes later, that same day, another shooting erupted at this Palms mini mall. Two people were injured. Police haven't said whether or not these incidents are gang-related. The city is offering a $50,000 reward in the Christopher John Paul case.
There is absolutely no known motive for why this person was killed. He was a very innocent man. He went to church, daily mass at St. Augustine Catholic Church in Culver City.
We believe there is somebody out there that knows about this, and we hope that this significant reward will help bring them out of the woodwork.
And help bring calm to this community. In Palms, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
If you know something but would like to report tips anonymously, call 1-800-222-TIPS. It's the first step in what may be the start of something big when it comes to the city's efforts to help end homelessness. As Anna Marcos tells us, city leaders say it's time to appoint somebody at the helm, a homeless czar.
The city's latest financial report on homelessness has been a wake-up call for council members. According to the report, the city spends $100 million a year to deal with the 23,000 homeless people getting services on L.A.'s streets.
As your report pointed out, you're being kind. You say we're spending $100 million a year. For the most part, we're wasting $100 million a year.
There are people who are homeless every place in the city. There are large concentrations that are obvious, like downtown, and the West Side and Venice, along freeways and highways.
To end homelessness, it's not enough to house homeless people. We have to prevent people from becoming newly homeless.
In response to that report, the city council has approved a plan to form an ad hoc committee on homelessness, the first of its kind. Under the plan, the city would hire a homelessness czar to oversee all departments that deal with the homeless. It would coordinate its homeless efforts within departments as well as with the county. And any groups getting funding for homeless services would have to join a coordinated entry database system that matches homeless people with the right type of housing and services, giving each resident a priority rating.
It's building the affordable housing, wrapping it around with supportive services, identifying the most chronic, the most vulnerable.
The fact of the matter is that we haven't had much coordination internally or even externally.
Some members of the public were not supportive of the plan.
The population of people in Skid Row, including myself and many other people here today, see this, look at the crowd, are not finding any good results by this council shoe here to address the issue of homelessness. There's little housing, rent's out of control.
Some residents applauded the city's efforts.
This is a great opportunity and a great moment in time for the city of Los Angeles.
The plan would also provide more money for mental health services and police who work with the mentally ill. And it would expand homeless services to areas outside of Skid Row, including the Operation Healthy Streets, a cleanup effort. In cities where similar plans have worked, supporters say, the formula is simple: housing, housing, and more housing. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
City leaders say other cities which are making progress on homelessness include New York, Salt Lake City, San Francisco, Portland, and Seattle. Boarding up abandoned properties with plywood may soon be a thing of the past, as L.A. city leaders take a look at a new, more community-friendly approach to blight. Yana K. has more.
I've asked Jordan to sling the hammer. Jordan has a demo.
Using a sledgehammer and swinging as hard as he can, this Council District 10 city employee can't shatter this plastic.
We've had a couple of people take a whack at it with sledgehammers and baseball bats, and it stays secure.
The demonstration was hosted by Council President Herb Wesson at an abandoned home in Mid-City L.A. to showcase a new product created by the company SecureView. Company executives said the plastic material could be used instead of plywood to secure and protect abandoned properties. They say the product has the look of a traditional window.
The moment you put on the plywood board, you're inviting vandalism, you're advertising the properties vacant coming to get me.
But company officials say this patented, state-of-the-art technology will help stop the blight that follows and keep intruders and squatters from coming inside. And for neighbors, it's a winning proposition.
Once they're boarded, you still don't know who's inside of them. People find ways to get past, you know, the plywood. So if you could see inside and see who's in there, that would be a big improvement. So yeah, this is an important product.
For a squatter looking to get inside, company execs say the flexible material is unbreakable and can't even be cut with a knife.
If it was really cleaned up, that people would walk past and just not even look at it.
It looks like a normal house.
Yes, it does.
Company officials say by improving the aesthetics of the home, the product can also help maintain the value of home prices in the neighborhood. Council President Wesson says he is open to a discussion about how the city can use this product to secure vacant properties within Los Angeles. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week.
Los Angeles is currently not using the product, but SecureView said it has already installed its product in 5,000 homes across the country. Traveling can be stressful for anyone, but for those with special needs, it can be even more of a daunting endeavor. But now, a new program launched by LAX is doing its part to make flying that much friendlier for those with autism and for their families. Here's Rasha Goel.
Passengers with autistic family members can now feel a little more at ease when traveling. Thanks to a new program at LAX called the Flight Experience Program, families can get better prepared for future travel through services offered by Los Angeles World Airports.
Families are hesitant to fly because they do not know how their loved ones may react inside a terminal and do not know how people will respond to their situation.
Our students that have autism, they have problems with transition, and it becomes very scary. And so this way, they get to practice these skills.
Los Angeles World Airports has partnered with several airlines for their program. The airlines will be holding mock experiences to provide autistic passengers and their families a chance to see what traveling is like. For many of the kids here, it's their first time coming to the airport.
He has a fear of heights. He didn't even want to come. So being able to come through this step process without any fear and with the help of all the employees, this is excellent.
This is great, knowing we can see how he's going to handle, you know, when we actually go into a trip.
Families had the chance to go through TSA screening, sit at the gates, and board the flight, giving them a realistic experience of traveling. Through the program, TSA officers and airport police are also taught about autism and possible behavioral issues that may occur at the airport or in flight, so they are better prepared.
You definitely need patience in this field, especially with children with autism or even any person with disabilities, being very respectful of their disabilities, not outing them in public, different things like that.
Lawa has also initiated an autism self-identification program that allows people with autism to wear a specially-designed sticker in the shape of a puzzle piece.
It will alert airport personnel or airport police or the airline that the individual has autism, and in turn, it'll let us know how to better serve them.
A new adventure waiting in the wings. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
And LAX also made the day of a very special kid named Noah recently. Noah's always had a wish, and as Yana K. tells us, local law enforcement officials and the Make-A-Wish Foundation helped make that dream come true.
And then we put our helmet on you. If it gets too, if it gets too heavy, you can always take it off.
Eight-year-old Noah Cohen is being lathered with attention from Los Angeles firefighters.
I just love it.
Noah, who was born with a rare condition and has endured two dozen surgeries since birth, has always wanted to become a first responder in Los Angeles, a dream that was sparked by watching the show Emergency. And thanks to the Make-A-Wish Foundation, his dream became a reality.
He's super excited. He loves anything related to emergency rescue, and so just to have them all together in one place is pretty incredible.
The family flew in from Vermont earlier in the day and enjoyed a hero's welcome at LAX from the Los Angeles Airport Police, L.A. County Sheriff, and Los Angeles Police and Fire Departments.
We're glad to have you here.
And emergency personnel certainly pulled out all the stops to make sure Noah felt like a true member of the team. After riding shotgun in a fire truck, sheriff's deputies dressed Noah in one of their bulletproof vests and helmet, and he also checked out the inside of an armored vehicle.
This is a fantastic dream come true for my son.
The mission of the Make-A-Wish Foundation is to grant the wishes of children with life-threatening conditions and put a smile on their faces. And for little Noah, his smile was certainly well-deserved. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week.
LAPD officers are one step closer to using on-body cameras in the field. The former LAPD headquarters could become an official L.A. landmark and other headlines in city beat. The Board of Police Commissioners voted three to one to approve rules governing the use of wearable cameras for LAPD officers, such as when the cameras must be turned on, how long the recordings should last, and how the devices are to be maintained and inspected. The Los Angeles Police Protectively, the union representing LAPD officers, supports these policies, saying that video is beneficial in providing a reliable account of events but should be used in conjunction with other evidence. Opponents say the policies do not address issues such as whether the footage will be released to the public or how the department will be able to use that footage. A special ceremony in honor of recently-retired Metro CEO Art Leahy and his family. MTA and Mayor Eric Garcetti unveiled a plaque that dedicates Metro's Division III bus yard at Cypress Park in Leahy's name. The recognition commemorates the Leahy family's combined 125 years of service to Metro and its agencies.
It's been a thrill to be at Metro. It's been the best six years of my career. We have done things no one else in the country has done.
I know every single day when folks here show up to work, they will look up and say, "An operator became the chief." And every single day, my work matters.
Leahy began his transit career as a bus driver for the Southern California Rapid Transit District back in 1971. LAPD's former headquarters, Parker Center, could be designated as a historic and cultural landmark. In January, the city's Cultural Heritage Commission recommended that the eight-story tower and surrounding landscaping be given historical-cultural status. This move coincides with the plan on the part of the city's Bureau of Engineering to demolish Parker Center and replace it with a bigger office tower. Conservationists say the building warrants landmark status because of its historic role in race relations and in the modernization of the policing profession. The L.A. City Council has until May 13th to grant historical status. L.A. City Attorney Mike Fuhr's office has won a temporary restraining order to keep Wilmington Medical Marijuana Dispensary, called 420 Collective, closed. Fuhr says the business is operating illegally under the voter-approved Prop D.
People who are really sick, who are suffering with cancer or other serious illnesses ought to have access to medical marijuana to alleviate their pain. But there are too many dispensaries. They were too close together, they were too close to schools and sensitive sites.
Fuhr's office is also filing civil cases against six other Wilmington businesses clustered within a six-block span of each other on Avalon Boulevard. It was casual Friday on a recent Wednesday in city council chambers as council members donned comfortable jeans in support of Denim Day, a national campaign that is part of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Folks are encouraged to wear jeans on Denim Day to stand up against sexual violence. And that's our This Week in Tweets. @LAPDHQ tweeted this photo of Denim Day founder Patricia Giggins, Mayor Eric Garcetti, and LAPD Chief Charlie Beck. Chief Beck also tweeted several snaps. One of them says, "Great event with Patty Giggins and @Guess." Councilman Mitch O'Farrell shared this Instagram photo via Twitter of many of his council colleagues in jeans. He wrote, "In Los Angeles, taking a stand against sexual violence." It's a sign of a well-used park, worn-out play equipment, and at One Valley Park, those aging playground structures are finally going into retirement. Devonshire Park in Mission Hills is well-loved by area residents, arguably none more than longtime resident Karen, who proudly introduces herself as a professional Polynesian dancer.
I have performed here in the park a couple of years ago. I do Polynesian dance. I'm one quarter from the island of Hawaii. My husband and I like to come over for park, for picnics and barbecues, and we've had two parties.
But that means the well-utilized park and its kids' play area were due or overdue for some much-needed upgrades.
I grew up not too far away from here. This was an area that we would come and play, and at the time, the brand-new park was really exciting. But to be able to do what we're doing here, create a new accessible format for young people to play of all ages, so that it's convenient to the community, that it's a place where you can have active and passive recreation, really is something that's very exciting.
Councilman Felipe Fuentes and the city's Recreation and Parks officials cut the ribbon on two new children's play areas designed for kids from two to 12 years old. Built-in canopies mean kids can enjoy the new slides and swings without worries about the harsh sun beaming down on them. And Karen, yes, the Polynesian dancer who has lived here since the 1950s, says the park here on Woodman Avenue has come a long way.
This park was a vacant lot when we very first moved in, and it was wonderful. And my, we got to be a part of the voting to bring the park in. We also got to be the ones to name the park. So when you can do this kind of stuff and see this progress happening, it's a beautiful thing.
But for young Abriana, who lives close to the park, she's concerned with something much more pressing: conquering her fears.
I'm scared of this one, because look, watch. See, I'm scared.
A thrill a minute at the newly refurbished Devonshire Park. Devonshire Park is located at 10230 Woodman Avenue in Mission Hills. In this week's edition of Things to Do, a pancake breakfast for a good cause, a tree giveaway, and something special for Mom on Mother's Day. Fill up your tummy and show your support for the LAPD. On Saturday, May 9th, enjoy an All You Can Eat Pancake Breakfast hosted by LAPD's SOLID, which stands for Supporters of Law Enforcement in Devonshire. The Pancake Breakfast will be served from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. with an open house from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., featuring a classic car show and face painting for kids. Tickets are $9 per person for the Pancake Breakfast. Kids 3 and under eat free. There is no charge for other activities. The event will be held at the LAPD Devonshire Division located at 10250 at Awanda Avenue in Northridge. Go to soliddevonshire.org. Councilmember Mitchell Englander and the group City Plants are sponsoring a free tree giveaway to city residents on Saturday, May 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. You can enjoy a day at the park at Northridge Park and go home with a tree to plant in your yard. There is a limit of one tree per address, and the trees will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis while supplies last. Proof of residence in the city of L.A. is required to adopt a tree. Northridge Park is located at 18300 Lamarche Street in Northridge. Go to cityplants.org. And don't forget to spoil the mother in your life this Mother's Day. On Sunday, May 10th, the Autry National Center is taking reservations for a Mother's Day brunch at its Crossroads West Cafe for the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Mother's Day menu includes lemon, blueberry, and ricotta pancakes, scrambled eggs with chorizo, and savory egg sandwiches with house-roasted pork belly. The Autry is located at 4700 Western Heritage Way. To make a reservation for Mother's Day, call 323-495-4329. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Ellen Chang. This just so happens to be my last show as anchor and producer of LA This Week after many wonderful years here. I want to thank you so much for tuning in and for your support during my time as host of the show. It's been a real privilege. And with that, I also want to thank all my friends here at Channel 35 and LA This Week. Yana K., one of our esteemed reporters and LA This Week's new anchor. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Did you know the average L.A. resident uses about 89 gallons of water each day? Challenge yourself to conserve. Turning off the faucet when you brush saves up to 10 gallons of water. Taking a five-minute or less shower saves up to 15 gallons of water. Washing only full loads of laundry saves up to 30 gallons of water. And fixing a running toilet can save up to 50 gallons of water. Keep it in mind all day, every day. It's water conservation the L.A. way.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm a Nyangar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayangar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles. And you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Namaste.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. We're waiting for a quorum. I'd like to call- I'd like to thank also Councilmember Mike Bonin. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank also Councilmember Mike Bonin. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilmember Price moves. Kocorian seconds. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Councilmember Bonin moves. Buscayeno seconds. Next item, please.
Mr. President, Items One and Two are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, One is going to be held on the desk for Councilmember Blumenfield. Two, seeing no- No members, we'll go ahead and open those two items. Or the one item, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next items.
And, Mr. President, pardon me, for Item Two, a Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee report was circulated and subsequently adopted.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move that with the new circulation of that as well.
Very good. Items Three and Four are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, those are before us right now. We'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Parks.
We have an amended motion.
On four? We'll go ahead and hold four for Parks. Do we have cards on three?
Yes, sir, both items.
We'll hold those for cards. And then we have the special. So, at this point, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Herb Wesson for a special presentation. The floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, and I want to welcome all of our visitors today. Today is one of my favorite days. It is Pet Adoption Friday, or Dog Adoption Friday. And I want to thank Arlene here for all of the work that she does for our animal services. And so, today's puppy that's looking for a home is called Sugar, correct? Brown Sugar, or- And as you can see, she is gorgeous. She is seven months old. She's a miniature Pinscher. This is about as big as she's going to get. She has her shots, so she's ready to go home today. For our visitors and the members that are here today, you know, in City Hall, since we've begun our Adopt a Pet program, Adopt a Dog program, we have a 100% adoption rate, and we must keep that alive. We are in fierce competition with the county, and I don't want to lose to them. But Sugar is looking for a home. She's ready to go today. Arlene, is there anything that you want to say about her special, other than she kisses everybody, or?
She's a total lapdog, so if you're looking for somebody to just cuddle and hang out and watch TV with you, she'd be the perfect buddy to do it. She's a sweet girl, sweet girl.
Thank you. Now, we're going to keep Sugar in the back for a little while. So if you have an interest, or you want to come take a photo, so that you can send it to your roommate or significant other to get a okay to bring her home, she'll be in the back so that you could do that. But she's very sweet. She's ready to go home today. Mr. President and members, I thank you for fording me these few minutes at the beginning of today's meeting. So anyway, we want to keep our 100% adoption rate alive, and I got a feeling we're going to send her home with a nice family. And the last thing, on a serious note, we do our very best to get every animal adopted. But at this point, we cannot do that. So when you adopt Sugar, you will be saving a life. So I'm asking, save a life, take her home, have unconditional love forever. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, members.
Thank you. Let's give another round of applause. 100% adoption. What a track record. I think we're, uh, I think we're actually ahead of the county on that, and really appreciate all the efforts everybody makes as well, so thank you so much. So I would like to turn the podium now over to me. So I'm going to go from here to there, and then maybe, maybe even back here again. So I'd like to turn it over to Councilwoman Nuri Martinez. If you could please take the chair. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Englander, for a presentation.
Thank you. Did everybody see that quick switch? Did you blink? You didn't blink, did you? All right. So, good morning. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Thank you, Madam President. Today, it's my honor to welcome everyone as we commemorate the start of Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month here in the city of Los Angeles. To kick off this month's celebration, please join me, along with our mayor, Eric Garcetti, in welcoming the very talented singer and songwriter, as she performs one of her own "Keep to the Path," Priska. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. It's such an honor to be here. My name's Priska, and I'm excited to share a song with you. I was not made for going fast. And I was told to keep my hands and feet safe inside the vehicle. And I was promised I could be everything that I wanted to, as long as I put my hands and feet to use, to use. And time is crashing, always pulling me farther away. And all I want is to be still, but now I'm farther away. And I will keep to the path, although I stray. And though I stumble, I do not ever break. This world was not made for going slow, so I must move before I lose myself to the reckless threat of time. Now is not the time to be, oh, a city child hiding recklessly from what they cannot see. Oh, and time is crashing, always pulling me farther away. And all I want is to be still, but now I'm farther away. And I will keep to the path, although I stray. Hey, and though I stumble, I do not ever break. Hey, and I will keep to the path, although I stray. And though I stumble, I do not ever break. And time is crashing, always pulling me farther away. Thank you. Thank you.
That was incredible. Thank you, thank you. This year, we are recognizing the diverse range of talent and the rich culture contributions of Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, all here in the city of Los Angeles, and to our creative economy. Last year, our creative economy in Los Angeles provided 612,400 jobs, generating over $30 billion in direct labor income for filmmakers, actors, performers, animators, and artists. Since the early days of Hollywood, our homegrown film industry flourished, in part due to the contributions of the API community. People like Kentaro Hayakawa, one of the most popular and highest-paid actors of the silent movie era, and the first Asian-American to win an Oscar for Best Supporting Actor in 1957. James Wong Howe, considered one of the best-paid cameramen in 1940, nominated 16 times for an Oscar and winning twice for his exceptional cinematography skills. Filmmaker Wayne Wong, best known for directing The Joy of Love Club, for also For Tana's Missing, shot with a 16-millimeter black-and-white camera, and the first feature film to have an all-Asian-American cast, grossing over $1 million back in 1982. Anna May Wong, born in Los Angeles in 1907, the first Asian-American actress to achieve worldwide stardom with a career spanning over four decades. Another Los Angeles native, Philip Ahn, film and television actor appearing in more than 300 projects. To our contemporaries, Hung Lee, Eddie Wong, Dwayne Johnson, Kevin Sujihara, the chairman and CEO of Warner Brothers, and the list goes on and on. These accomplishments by these talented filmmakers, actors, producers, performers, performers and artists are more than just trivia questions to be answered only by film buffs. Their contributions have helped build the foundation, capturing the history of Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, all here in Los Angeles. The passion and the craft shared onstage, on the set, and on our streets, represented by many of you in this room here today, is shaping the narrative and defining the culture and identity of the API community for generations to come, and I'd like to give you all a huge round of applause and welcome. I'd like to also recognize our elected officials, and while all of you are VIPs here in this room today, some other VIPs as well. First and foremost, Mayor Eric Garcetti. Our highest-ranking Asian-American elected state official, State Treasurer John Chung. Our Assistant Majority Whip, Evan Lo. Also joining us, and I'm gonna read through this list, our City Attorney Mike Fuer, City Controller Ron Galperin, Board of Fire Commissioners, Dr. Jimmy Hara, Chief Legislative Analyst Sharon So, our City of Los Angeles Treasurer, Antoinette Cristovol, General Manager of the Department of Cultural Affairs, Danielle Brazil, General Manager of the Personnel Department, Wendy Macy, General Manager of the Department of General Services, Tony Royster, our General Manager of El Pueblo, Chris Espinoza, the Assistant Manager of APAM Committee Member, Lisa Sarno, the highest-ranking American, Asian-American officer in the Los Angeles Police Department, Commander Blake Chow from the Los Angeles Police Department, he's here. Our Monterey Park City Clerk, Vincent Chang. L.A. Community College Personnel Commissioner, David Awada. Garvey School Board Member, Henry Lo. San Gabriel Valley Water District Board Member, Thomas Wong. Our City of Glendale Arts and Cultural Commissioner, Stephen Lee. Our City of Glendale Planning Commissioner, Chang Lee. Our City of Cerritos Recreation and Parks Commissioner, James Yee. And former State Assembly Member, Warren Fertani. I would now, now like to turn it over, the podium, to our Mayor, Eric Garcetti.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Englander, and thank you to the City Council. It's always a great joy to be back in this chambers, and I want to congratulate CAPE and Collaboration and Visual Communication for their incredible contributions to the story of Los Angeles and the ongoing story of the API and Native Hawaiian communities. You know, the story of Los Angeles is one that's intertwined with the contributions of this very Asian and Pacific city, and the people who have always come from the Pacific. The pobladores who set out, actually two of them that were part of the original party that came from then, Baja California, were misclassified in Spanish as chino, meaning Chinese. They were actually two Filipinos who were part of that original party, and they set out to come here to settle this city. Like so many of our stories, it's more nuanced, though. They never made it, and I always thought it was kind of a fitting metaphor for still the work that is left undone to achieve equality for Asian-Pacific Islander and Native Hawaiian communities here in Los Angeles. I'm so proud of this Pacific city and of what will be a Pacific century, but we also have to own the history of the past in order to rewrite the future, which is why we did things like create a historic Filipino town, because in memory of the ink boys and their families who couldn't live downtown, those clerks in the Filipino community who were forced west, where African-Americans and others lived too, because downtown wasn't allowed for anybody but the whites and the Anglos. In Boyle Heights, the Japanese community that grew up there and in the Crenshaw Corridor, folks that were a part of the bravery of this country. We just welcomed the Japanese Prime Minister, and we laid a wreath at the Gopher Broke Monument where we saw the heroism of thousands of Angelinos who left internment camps to go fight for this country that was putting them in internment camps and to protect the freedoms that we have here today. The riots that we had in the 19th century, when this town was a nearly lawless place, that resulted in the loss of life of those Chinese immigrants who had come here to make a better life for themselves and their family. We remember the tears of the past in order to find the stories of the present and to make a better future for all of us. And today, the lifeblood of this town, our political lifeblood, our economic lifeblood, and today, we celebrate our cultural lifeblood, that comes from this community that is as diverse as our city itself, both a community but also a collection of so many different communities, of folks who now can say that this is the largest Thai community outside of Thailand and Korean community outside of Korea, and you can go through 39 countries, many of them Asian-Pacific countries, that are represented, so that we can say this is indeed a great Cambodian city, and a great Vietnamese city, and a great Chinese city, and even a great Mongolian city, and all of us that are here together recognizing that this is what we write today, isn't just history we read, but that we make. So as Mayor of this town, I couldn't be prouder to have represented, as councilmember, so much of the Asian-Pacific Islander community, and now as Mayor, to represent this entire city, and to see around us those who have served, and let me single out two people as I conclude my remarks, who are retiring, not from activism, but from the jobs that they've had. Susan Dilks, my dear friend, who is the former Executive Director of FASG, the Filipino-American Service Group Incorporated, which for years has helped our Filipino veterans and our Filipino-Americans who live here receive the justice that they are due, and I want to thank Susan for her service. I know that she is here, and thank her for what she has done. And Maria Sheets, who is at our Department of Public Works as an Assistant Director for the Office of Community Beautification. Thank you both for your service inside and outside of City Hall. Thank you to everybody who has taken leadership roles in making sure that we have a reflection of the city in our leadership, a reflection of our city in our departments, and most importantly, that we have a voice of this community and its stories will be told. I hope that people, lastly, who are not Asian-Pacific Islander or Native Hawaiians, will take this month as an opportunity to see the culture that we have in the booklet that the Department of Cultural Affairs puts out, of the many events and concerts and talks and discussions that we have, in order for us to fully arrive at a, at a city that is the promise of this country, one that reflects where this world is today and where this country will be tomorrow, go out there and learn something, experience something, and feel the culture that is the heart of Los Angeles. Thank you and have a great month, everybody. And here's the guide.
Great, thank you. Let's give another incredible round of applause for our Mayor, Eric Garcetti. He's just doing such a, such a great job. And now, it's my honor and my privilege to bring up our State Treasurer and a dear friend, John Chung.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished councilmembers and distinguished friends, I am so pleased to join you this morning. I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to join all of you. I first wanted to congratulate the Asian-Pacific Islander Heritage Committee for putting this together. I am an immigrant to this state. As you can tell, I am South Side Irish from suburban Chicago. And then, when I chose to adopt a place that I would call home for my future, I chose Los Angeles. I lived nearby, next door, but I wanted to extend to my mom, a good Asian mom, like a lot, and all moms, who understand that you provide your kids with the best opportunities available. And Los Angeles, as Henry David Thoreau would mention in a different turn of a phrase, the, as we stand here, there are the heavens above, but in the cities of angels, we also have the ground that is the heaven below us. And so this is the city that we grow and thrive, and I thank all of you for extraordinary work as we seek that goal. I wanted to also recognize, as when I first came here, as a place of great hope, and so during those days, when Mayor Bradley was in place, you had the living legends. You had Jeff Matsuji, you had Rose Ochi, you had Lily Lee, and to see this new generation continue to thrive and move us to a higher plane is all that more encouraging. And for those, when I was young, as I pointed out, this was a place of hope, is to see that hope has taken place, but hope continues to rise and inspire all of us. So thank you to the committee for doing that. I also wanted to point out thanking the honorees, as the mayor did. Collaboration, Visual Communications, and CAPE. You speak truth, you speak hope, you speak at an important juncture. We know, in the Asian perspective and media, it's been 20 years between shows. We haven't received the recognition in many aspects, especially in entertainment and culture. We see what happened in the technology communities, the reports that were issued earlier this week, where you have Asian-Americans studiously working to contribute to our communities, and yet, they have hit a glass ceiling. So our work continues ahead. But as it has been in the history of all of America, people have come together, and I wanted to thank, in particular, the person in purple, who cheered really loud at the announcement of this celebration. I think it speaks to the fact that this is a city of people of diverse communities, diverse face, diverse beliefs, but at the core, we're Angelinos, and shall we share that sense of community and a belief in each other to rise to a better place. So again, I will cite Henry David Thoreau. We will move forward together to meet a future that embraces us all. Congratulations on the celebration.
Before I, I call up our next speaker, I'd like to also recognize somebody who I saw here, but wasn't on the list, because she probably didn't RSVP that she was coming because she's so busy 24 hours a day, seven days a week, usually out in every one of our communities every night, and that's our Department of Neighborhood Empowerment General Manager, Gracie Lu. I knew, I saw you, I saw you. So with that, I'd like to now bring up our City Attorney, Mike Fuer.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It is so wonderful to be here with so many friends. As I look around the audience, I want to single out one of them, because I had the chance to serve with him in the state legislature, my former colleague, Warren Fertani, who is sitting here, who's been mentioned earlier. I also need to say, on behalf of the City Attorney's Office, how inspiring our honorees are for all of us in the rich communities of the city of Los Angeles. I couldn't help but think, as we were standing, listening to the presentation so far, about an event I'd mentioned once before in this body. My mom grew up in Boyle Heights, and she remembers very vividly, one day, her friends of Japanese-American descent were around her, and the next day, they were all gone. And that lesson of how significant it is for us to always respect each other and never lose sight of the civil rights that adhere in each of us is a key motivator for us in the City Attorney's Office. We had the opportunity, in our celebration of API Heritage Month, to have the Chief Justice of the State of California, Tani Kantil Sakawue, of Filipino-American descent, come join us to share her experiences with our office. Our office, of course, celebrates the rich, rich texture of our city. I'll have the opportunity, in just a couple weeks, myself, to speak at a conference of prosecutors in Seoul, South Korea, to share our mutual experiences with each other and improve public safety and the quality of life in each of the cities we serve. All of us here in the city of Los Angeles ought to celebrate the heritages of each other. This is a marvelous expression of that value. Mitch, thank you very much for allowing me to say a few words.
Great, thank you so much, and it is an honor and privilege as well, and let's put our hands together that we welcome City Controller Ron Galperin.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you so much to the City Council, to our mayor, to our State Treasurer for being here this morning to celebrate Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It's great to be among so many friends here in council chambers. As we know, the greater L.A. area is home to more Asian-Americans and people of Pacific Island descent than anywhere in the country. The largest population of Filipino-Americans, Thai-Americans, Cambodian-Americans, 45 different ethnic groups speaking 28 languages. And of course, our city has been very enriched by all of these folks who are here, and for more than a century, you've been committed to public service, to civic activism, to community engagement, and some have been here for one generation, some here for two generations, some here for many, many generations, but it really tells us a lot about the promise and the hope of our country and of the city of Los Angeles. I know myself, being the first to be born in the United States, and my parents, who both came here as immigrants. Now, my office of a City Controller has notably, I have to say, been enriched by the contributions of Asian and Pacific Islanders. 60% of the employees of the Controller's Office are Asian-Pacific Islander Americans. Might that have something to do with the quality of work that we're putting out? I think so. Could, I ask you to rise, everybody who's in our office, we have a few people from our office, give them a hand, the fabulous people from the Controller's Office. And being Controller, I'm, as you know, quite interested in economic impacts, so we have something like 180,000 APIA-owned businesses in L.A. So we have something like 180,000 APIA-owned businesses in LA County, a great many of them which are in the city of Los Angeles. And these businesses and investments have been an economic engine for our region and for the city. The APIA community also is a leader in creating jobs and payroll, and my favorite, municipal revenues. These successes haven't, of course, touched all of the APIA community, and these successes have not come without discrimination and without hardship. But today, we celebrate the many successes, the innumerable contributions of the APIA community, while remembering the challenges, past and present, as we stand as one city from historic Filipino town to Chinatown, to Thai town, to Koreatown, Little Tokyo, and more. So thank you for the opportunity to be part of this fantastic celebration. Enjoy.
I'm gonna have to go, if we're gonna go down that road and talk about the numbers in the office, then I gotta give some shout-outs to my own office, of course. So I'll first start with my chief of staff, John Lee. And these are my senior staff members, Semi Park, who helped put this together today and has just done a phenomenal job. My planning deputy, Hannah Lee. My transportation deputy, Brian O. And I'll keep going down the list, but you know, you've thrown out the 60%, so we'll sprinkle these throughout the presentation. For next, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Joe Buscayeno, my partner in this and co-chair for introductions of the Special Olympics.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Englander. Joining me for this presentation is Commander Blake Chow, who has been instrumental in the planning of the Special Olympics World Games, where we're gonna be hosting here in the city of Los Angeles come July. It's my pleasure to introduce a few of the athletes who have joined us here. Help me welcome Dustin Plunkett, Kaylee Versfeldt, and Mark Wolfher. Come on up, guys, these are our athletes. This way, this way. All right. For 46 years, the Special Olympics have been striving to create a better world by fostering the acceptance and inclusion of all people. And this year, we will welcome athletes from all over the world to the city of Los Angeles to participate in this year's Special Olympic World Games. And with over 1.1 million athletes in 27 countries, the Asia-Pacific region is the fastest-growing area of the world in terms of athletes and competitions. And there are 778 athletes, 251 coaches, 75 supporting representatives, and 450 family members coming up here to Los Angeles this summer from the Asia-Pacific region. Thank you to our athletes who have joined us here. We appreciate your presence, and we wish you the best in the competition coming up this summer. And I'd like to bring Dustin up to say a few words. Dustin Plunkett, please welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. It gives a great pleasure to tell you guys that the Special Olympics, Asia-Pacific, it's gonna be the fourth-largest region coming to compete this summer. As the Councilmember said, the stats figure it's coming from that region, but they're also bringing the second-largest delegation from that region in Team India that'll be coming here to compete this summer for the World Games. But let me tell you guys, the meaning of our World Games can be found in our logo. And we have our Circle of Inclusion with us today, and we're asking everybody to reach up and support the Games. Reach up and come out and cheer the team coming from Asia-Pacific. Reach up and support all the athletes coming from around the world in 177 countries this summer. And it starts with our celebratory pose, and that represents our athletes' determination, courage, and joy. And we're inside the Circle of Inclusion that leads to a substance and inclusion of people with intellectual disabilities around the world. And the multicolors show how diverse the Special Olympics is as a community, and how diverse Los Angeles is as a community, and how we can mirror all 177 countries that'll be coming here this summer to compete. Thank you.
All right, Dustin. Throw our hands up. Throw 'em all up. Yeah. Again, again, yeah.
All right, back to you, Mr. Englander. Right, thank you very much. Now we have our presentations of awards, and we're gonna ask each council member that will announce the award and honoree. They'll play 30 to 45-second clip as well. And first and foremost, I will start off with our Spirit Award for Visual Communications. The Spirit Award goes to Visual Communications for their grassroots activism and leadership in the community. If we can play the clip. And accepting the award for visual, on behalf of Visual Community, is Executive Director Francis Kulato, who just last week concluded the week-long Los Angeles Asian Pacific Film Festival, screening 155 films across Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Good morning, everybody. On behalf of Visual Communications, the staff and board of directors, it is my honor to accept this award. Thank you for the city of Los Angeles for believing in us. Visual Communications of VC began 45 years ago with media artists dedicated to telling the stories of our Asian Pacific American communities. Then VC, formerly known as Southern California Asian American Studies Central, our founders began the work of documenting our stories through film, photographs, exhibits, and other media. But before the numerous buildings and offices that housed us, the equipment and tools and money that our founders, our donors, funders, supporters, and community partners gave us, before the 31 editions of the Los Angeles Asian Pacific Film Festival, and hundreds of APA filmmakers and artists, just long before today, there was just a collective spirit to show our histories, our struggles, our accomplishments. There was just a spirit to stand up and speak out for fairness, equality, and justice. So thank you for this award as an opportunity to reignite the spirit as we move forward. We're also honored to be up here with two other organizations, our partners, who we admire and who also believe in the power of the arts and media. Congratulations to Collaboration and CAPE, to Minji and Michelle. Congratulations. And we only hope that as we continue our work, that we keep up, remember the initial spirit that drives us. I'd like to dedicate this award to Linda Mabala, our former executive director who passed away 12 years ago. Your spirit continues to live with us. Thank you, everybody, have a great month.
Now I'd like to call up our Dream Award. Our Dream Award is presented to Collaboration for their efforts to help artists from humble beginnings to achieve professional success. Collaboration is an official nonprofit organization whose mission is to build bridges, to create and abolish a new sense of what it means to be an Angelino as well, and get rid of negative stereotypes, and to promote diversity and strong API identity. Let's give it up for Collaboration. We've got a video for them as well.
If you wanna be good at piano, you wanna be good at painting, writing, you wanna be good at singing a note, you have to practice and put in a lot of time, energy, effort. You have to take risks, you have to fail, you have to get up and perform in front of people, you have to share the deepest part of yourself. That's not easy. A lot of people will ask me, what's the big deal with this whole Asian American thing? What does Collaboration do? What if Collaboration didn't exist? What if there was no platform, this outlet for young people to get together and basically create a world that they wanna live in? A collaborative community where people actually wanna get together, spend time with one another, and create stuff. We need a place for artists and for people who are passionate about telling and sharing their stories to be able to do it. I hope that the audience can see how much passion, creativity, hard work went into making the show as well, and to keeping this movement alive. It's something that means so much to everybody involved. It's all a huge labor of love. I hope that when everybody sees these artists up on the stage, owning who they are, owning their craft, showing how much bravery and dedication and passion goes into doing what they're doing, I hope that they can really appreciate that they're watching people create themselves right in front of their eyes.
Hi. Is there someone speaking for me? Okay, it's all me. Thank you so much. My name is Minji Chang. I'm the Executive Director of Collaboration. I just wanted to thank the city council and the committee for honoring us with this amazing, beautiful award. I spoke so much thoroughly in the video, I don't know if there's anything else to say, but what I can say is that Los Angeles is the roots and the home and the birthplace of Collaboration in Koreatown by our former executive director, Paul P.K. Kim, who I would really like to dedicate this award to. It's because of him that One Show became this huge nationwide movement, and having the roots in LA means so much to us, and to have this honor means so much to us. I'm so honored to be standing here next to, sitting next to Phil, angry Asian man, to be sitting in the same row as Francis and Michelle and Hannah from CAPE and from Visual Communications, who do so much incredible, important work for the community to build these platforms for storytellers, for artists to thrive and be able to change and shape culture. It's just so incredible to be here. I'm actually a new Los Angelino. I just moved here a year ago, and I'm loving it. San Francisco.
All right. We got another.
Got another. So thank you again so much, and I did wanna acknowledge Roy Choi, who's our CEO, our executive producer, who has believed in Collaboration for more than a decade to help us get to where we are. And I also wanna acknowledge Priska, who is actually one of our former Collaboration Los Angeles finalists, and she is just an amazing artist, and such an honor for her to perform today. So thank you. I wanted to give Roy a chance to say something.
I think you did a good job.
I did.
Thank you, one in the room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn it back over to Councilmember Buscayeno, who's going to introduce and announce our Hope Award.
Thank you, Mitch. And before I do that, I wanna invite all Angelinos to come to the Harbor area and visit two key memorial sites that pay tribute to the API community. And one, of course, is the Korean Friendship Bell in San Pedro, and then on Terminal Island, the Japanese Fishing Village Memorial. Please come and visit. And also my constituents here, the Honorable Warren Forutani, thank you, Warren, for joining us, and just learned a great deal growing up and watching you in public service, and what you've done in the State Assembly, and just been a champion for social justice. We wanna thank you for joining us, and he's also a former Public Works Commissioner. Thank you, Warren, for joining us, we love you. Each year, yes. And now to the Hope Award. Each year, the Hope Award is given to an individual or organization from the Asian Pacific Islander American community in recognition for achieving the highest level of professional success. And this year, I'm proud to present the Hope Award to the Coalition of Asian Pacifics in Entertainment, CAPE. CAPE is a leading nonprofit organization dedicated to improving Asian American Pacific Islander images and representations through media and entertainment. At this point, I'll turn to Channel 35 and the video monitors for a video presentation.
Founded in 1991, CAPE, the Coalition of Asian Pacifics in Entertainment, is a leading nonprofit organization dedicated to improving Asian Americans and Pacific Islander images and representation through media and entertainment. CAPE champions diversity through signature programs such as the CAPE New Writers Fellowship, the CAPE I Am Campaign, educational panels, and networking mixers. Invest in tomorrow by donating today. CAPE USA.
Let's hear it for CAPE. All right. And here representing CAPE is Wenda Fong, who I was told, she was introduced to her husband by then-councilmember Mike Wu, and she is the co-founder and chairperson emeritus of CAPE, who will be accepting the award on behalf of the organization. Help me welcome Wenda Fong.
Thank you so much. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. May I give this to you to hold? And thank you so much for this, this is so gorgeous. Thank you very much, Councilman Buscayeno, and to Mayor Garcetti, to all of the Los Angeles City Council members, to our distinguished guests, friends, and fellow honorees. On behalf of CAPE, we are deeply honored, grateful, and simply thrilled to be accepting the Hope Award from the city of Los Angeles. CAPE was founded 24 years ago by Fritz Friedman, Chris Lee, and me, as a way for Asian American and Pacific Islanders within the industry to network and support each other. Our first mixer had 90 attendees, who were producers, directors, writers, executives, and some of whom are here today. With our incredible board of directors, advisory council, staff, and supporters, our mission and purpose has grown to educating, connecting, and empowering AAPI artists and leaders in entertainment and media. We have worked tenaciously and passionately to grow CAPE into ever higher levels by establishing strong relationships with the networks, studios, the guilds, companies, sponsors, and our community. Many have often heard me say that we stand on the shoulders of those who came before us, and that it is our responsibility to help the next generation so that they may stand on our shoulders. CAPE has done this. CAPE has changed lives, launched careers, boosted careers, created programs and opportunities. Our members have literally changed the face of television, film, and social media. CAPE has grown into the largest, most respected, and influential professional AAPI nonprofit organization in the entertainment industry. One of our most successful programs is the CAPE New Writers Fellowship, where we mentor and empower film and television writers. Remarkably, last year, all of our television fellows got jobs, and this year, two of our writers have already been hired. Our Writers Fellowship has been lauded as the best model for writers' programs. Another one of our successful programs has been our I Am Campaign. We are very proud that the CAPE I Am Campaign is the largest AAPI campaign in is the largest AAPI campaign in YouTube history
Only second word.
And the fourth-largest nonprofit campaign on YouTube ever. Just yesterday, we launched the 2015 I Am Campaign, which features powerful stories from Asian Americans who are making their mark in entertainment. None of this could have been accomplished without our extraordinary supporters, especially some who I will ask to stand and be acknowledged. First, our CAPE co-founder and advisor Fritz Friedman. Our stellar board of directors. And our hard-working staff, past and present. As CAPE heads into its 25th anniversary, we are truly honored by this recognition from the City of Los Angeles. With the Hope Award, we are inspired to continue our mission with passion and perseverance. So with heartfelt gratitude, we are very, very thankful. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Really, thank you. We're so honored. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Mr. Englander, if I can interrupt you for just a second. Mr. Englander, if I can interrupt for just a second. I have a very special introduction. With us here in council is Chris Holden, our Majority Leader of the California State Assembly. Welcome, sir. Assemblymember Chris Holden. Back to you, Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much. And Chris, how you doing? Good to see you. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. I'd like to now recognize all of our sponsors. And we could not do this with all the sponsors and hard work that went into putting this together. This really is like a ceremonial... In fact, next year, I think what we ought to do is play music and have an envelope delivered and say the winner is. Because you're all winners, but this is truly incredible. Today's ceremony, and with the generous donations and time and resources of our supporters, we'd like to thank our exclusive airline sponsor, American Airlines. And let's give them a round of applause. We'd also like to thank NBC Universal and Steve Nissen with NBC. Give them a round of applause. And we'd also like to thank SoCal Gas, Clear Channel, and Coffee Bean and Tealie for their contributions today as well. Let's give all of them a big round of applause. And of course, our Department of Cultural Affairs and the artists who contributed their artwork for producing the beautiful calendar and our cultural guide, which the mayor spoke about earlier. Let's give them all a big round of applause as well. I'd also like to thank our committee members, APAM, for planning and organizing today's ceremonial festivals, which will be held in the rotunda following this presentation. And the committee, and wanted to give back to local nonprofits. This is terrific. Listen up to this. This is great, colleagues. This year, APAM and the committee, they wanted to give back to the local nonprofits. So what they did is they gathered and put together fundraising to thank those who are doing exceptional work on behalf of the community for running domestic violence shelters, senior programs, serving our youth, to organizing the annual Lotus Festival, to empowering the native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander community. We have representatives here that we're going to give an envelope to, filled not with cash, but with a check, to the Asian Pacific Women's Center, the Japanese Institute of Sawtell, the Chinatown Youth and Service Center, L.A. Lotus Festival, and Epic. If we can give them a big round of applause, they'll be getting a contribution from APAM. And we've got envelopes for all of them. And I wanted to thank all of you as well for making this truly historic and the cultural significance, really an icon here in our community this month and every month and what you all do each and every day for Los Angeles. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Englander. And we have Mr. O'Farrell, who wants to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just a few words. I just want to really thank the organizers of this incredible event. Thank you, Mr. Englander. What an incredible presentation. And really, I have to highlight some of the communities in the 13th District. We've got historic Filipino town. We've got Koreatown. We have Thai Town. We have Little Bangladesh. Many other languages, many other Asian Pacific Islander communities represented, speaking Cambodian, Vietnamese, Cantonese, Mandarin. And I want to invite everyone to the 35th Annual Lotus Festival. The host country is Mongolia. And it's at Echo Park Lake in eight short weeks already. And it will be on the weekend of Saturday and Sunday, July 11th and 12th. And I just have to highlight the work of my Chief of Staff, Jeannie Min. One of my deputies, Angelo Yanko, and he is of Filipino descent, as is Gigi Galias of my staff. And I also want to just highlight a very exciting young leader in the State Assembly, and that is Evan Lo, my friend, my dear friend Evan Lo, who represents the 28th District in the State Assembly. I don't know if he's still here or not, but he's the youngest Asian American ever elected to the State Assembly. And he's an exciting new young leader. And I think he has a very bright future. And I'm just really proud to call him my friend. So congratulations, organizers. This is going to be a wonderful season for all of us. So again, I really tip my hat to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to all the honorees. Mr. Price, are you ready for your next presentation? Mr. Price, we're just waiting for our guests to exit the council chambers. If we can do it as quietly as possible, please. I would appreciate it. Think we're ready, Mr. Price? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Members, you know, at a time when police, community relations are really a topic of debate and discussion all across our country, it's significant that we can salute an individual who really epitomizes the best of community-based policing. Today, we're celebrating with Senior Lead Officer Rick Madrigal. He started his career with LAPD in 1983 at West Los Angeles Division, where he spent the first two years of his service. In 1985, he moved to Newton, where he has called home ever since. Officer Madrigal is a well-respected and sought-after senior lead officer who, without hesitation, assists community members, fellow senior lead officers and others, in formulating plans of action to improve the quality of life in our community. Officer Madrigal has been able to build trust and collaboration between business owners and residents and advocacy organizations to encourage responsibility for all to create a safe haven for families and children in our community. Officer Madrigal is a humble, cool, has a calm demeanor, and he is well-respected by all. His work ethic and integrity is unquestioned, and it really is a standard for others to follow. And so, it's on behalf of the grateful City of Los Angeles, citizens in the 9th District, fellow officers and friends, and we are going to just miss you and we want to just recognize your service to our community and our police. The 32 years' exemplary service. We are going to miss you. We love you. We wish you best. You're here celebrating with your loving wife and your three lovely sons. And it really is a celebration for us all to salute you and your service to our community. We thank you.
So I want to thank everyone for this opportunity to thank the city for to be able to serve the last 31 years. It's truly been an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price, and congratulations, sir. So we're going to move on to general public comment. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, general public comment.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. It's always a pleasure when either you, Ms. Martinez, or Mr. Sodio, when you are on the school board. I was an L.A. UST employee as a substitute teacher for quarter of a century. First of all, there are Eric Garcetti, four, re-elect Eric Garcetti banners right here in the bridge. They're up there. They're illegal. The reporters, the male reporters over here that cover the City Council are so in love with Eric and fantasize about being Monica Lewinsky to Eric, they won't do anything. Go over there. The pictures are on my website. There should be no reelection posters. I've been here since Mayor Sam. You already was mayor. And I've never seen a picture, but they're up here. Next, most important, tomorrow, we are having our celebration for our $1 billion victory against the Millennium Towers. And that will be at the Hollywood Presbyterian Church at 10:00 a.m. at the corner of Yucca and Gower. Refreshments? You want to know the secret of stopping the government? Robert Silverstein, our attorney, will be there. 10:00 a.m., Hollywood Presbyterian Church. There's room for hundreds. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Prudence Autry?
He gets three, I get one. I read things. Brendan Glenn. Mr. Drizzle. Love wins a neutral game. Yesterday, I took a stroll down the boardwalk. It was interesting. Most were just curious, those who naturally are. The news vans piqued the curiosity of those who weren't yet aware. Sadness and fear. Will I be next? The general temperature aware. Global police state stand-down, calling in brothers and sisters in the uniform of peace officers to maintain the neutral space in Venice Beach tomorrow, where riot gear and overly aggressive postures are neither appropriate nor welcome by the mainstream of our community. Walk in peace, serve and protect, wearing the uniform some of our children do not fear yet. Together, we face any violence we may encounter.
Ma'am, your time is up. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler.
Don't I get two minutes, Nury? You gave two minutes to John Walsh. You've been a bad Nury. So, we had our nice little presentation. And our mayor showed up today, but he couldn't show up last night to the Venice Community Meeting. And the chief of police could not show up to the meeting he called. You know why? Because they were both traveling in a city-owned vehicle, and it hit a pothole. And they were unable to make it and got stuck in there together. It was so romantic. So, in Venice, everybody talks about people that get shot just because they're homeless and interfering with the tourists. Yes. Nury. The new city of Nury Martinez. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spindler. Next speaker, Wilhelmina Scott-Garwright Jr. I'm sorry. William Scott.
It's concerning bringing finances to the city alone because I do have the landlord responsibility. So, Mr. Parks, I'm sure is aware, Councilwoman...
Sir, can you get closer to the mic? We can't hear you.
Get closer?
Yes, that's better.
All right, I'll say it again. I'm sure Councilman Parks and retired Councilwoman Perry, and Executive Perry, and the mayor also, is aware of bringing finances with transportation shelters for graduate students, those with degrees, and et cetera. This transportation project started during, before, I think, to honor Dr. Bradley, before he left in Ronald Reagan and George Bush. And it takes time for a project of this magnitude to manifest. But it's still, other items have to be worked out. And I'm taking the restrictions, as far as the city is concerned, as of my security bond the Federal Reserve Bank has. So, I'm sure honorary Mayor Garcetti knows how to get in contact.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Next speaker, Michael Hunt.
I gotta endorse a few people. Hillary Clinton and Wendy Gold. Next mayor, Wendy and Hillary for president. So, with that said, I have to really, really tell the 11th District to kiss my ass. Thank you.
Next speaker, Eric Previn.
Good morning, City Council. It's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. That was a very beautiful presentation this morning. It was, the room was packed, thank you for doing it. In the future, however, it would be great if you could agendize it in some way so that the public would have any idea. I guess all those people were invited by various, you know, special interests, which is fine, but make it public is what I implore you to do. I would also like to thank and please ask Mr. Bonin to connect with Salita Reynolds to step forward, because with the Department of Transportation, this is a little embarrassing, but I'm going to bring it onto the record, because I have to. I paid an expired meter, 63 bucks, timely. Moments later, I received a huge bill, and I have refused to pay it. And now, they are putting the DMV power of the state to try to, I mean, this is shocking, because I'm such an outspoken critic, but they're suggesting that my vehicles can't be registered, which I, believe me, will not stand. So I would ask the department, who does obviously have the authority, and by the way, Mr. Philip Wong should get really a sort of a special commemoration.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. I have a general public comment card with no name, so I'm going to read the address. 15053 Rainetta Drive in Sherman Oaks. Is that you, ma'am? Would it, state your name, ma'am, because it wasn't written on the card. Say that again.
Sybil Cone.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the Department of Animal Services refuses to release my impounded dogs. They were impounded on the 11th of April. There is a hearing scheduled for June 10th, and then there's a report after that, which could take another month. This, I believe, is illegal. The general manager of Animal Services said that I could not attend a public hearing. That is absolutely a lie and illegal. This morning, I did go to a public hearing, and it is public. How does one make a $240,000 a year job accountable to the City of Los Angeles?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clerk, that concludes public comments. We're going to move on to item one. Sir, please sit down. I've not called your card. We're moving on to item one. Mr. Blumenfield, are you ready?
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam President, we're going to grapple with communications in the aftermath of an earthquake. Having the ability to communicate with our loved ones has changed dramatically since 1994. Communications are paramount when the next disaster strikes, and we know it's not if, it's when. And to increase the city's resilience in this area, as part of the mayor's task force, where he put together that one-year-long report, he came up with a number of ideas, and one of the ones I thought was particularly important that he recommended was amending the building code to require new freestanding cellular communications towers to be built at a stronger standard, adopting an importance factor of 1.5, which mirrors the standard currently required for public safety facilities. Our communications facilities are just as important as our public safety facilities. They, in the event of a disaster, they are our public safety facilities. They're an integral part of them, which is why we have this measure before us today. It means upgrading these structures to the safest available standards. We must collectively do this. An earthquake doesn't care about district lines. This is a citywide initiative. So please note the existing towers would not be affected by the code change. It's about towers moving forward. It also wouldn't change the footprint very dramatically. It changes the price only marginally. It's a win-win for public safety, for communications, and I urge your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Blumenfield, I see no speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, open the roll.
Thank you.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk, item three.
Item three called Special for Cards.
Mr. Herman, I'm going to ask you one more time. Please sit down. We're moving on to item three. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential. Occasionally, it's blocked by anonymous. But in any case, this is a very important item. This is item three. This is REAP. I've explained this, but people come up to me and say, hey, you did a great job on that. If you have code violations in your home, 2622 South Normandy, code violations, and East 194th Street and South Hooper, if it's west of La Brea, you can get, a landlord gets away with it. But on this side of the area, of the city, and in South LA, you send a letter to your manager, through your manager, to the owner, and if the code violations are not remedied within 30 days or 60 days, then the city tells you, sends you a registered letter. You don't pay your rent to the city, to the landlord anymore. You pay it to the city. This is why, in a city of 4 million people, we have very, very few landlords getting away with allowing their property to be run down. As I said, the city is doing a good job here, remember? I'm not one of those, "Hey, you're all a bunch of crooks." I'm not that way. When you do a good job, I am the first to applaud you. Now, take those damn Garcetti signs down.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman. Item three.
Item three, ma'am? I don't have it with me, hang on.
Are you going to speak on this item, Mr. Herman? If not, I'm calling the next speaker.
I don't want to be off-topic, off the agenda, ma'am, because, you know.
Well, that's great. Let's start talking about the agenda item.
Round over removing various properties from the rent escrow regarding Mr. Parks. So, Madam Speaker, why do you get so uptight? All we're trying to do, as we always ever try to do, is do find out the reason why the violations under the rent escrow continue on a timely basis. Why are we in the business of putting people out of their homes and causing so much harm to the landlords, who are supposed to make our home habitability safe and healthy for us? Do you ever find it a challenge to forgive, Miss Speaker?
No, I don't.
Or especially have the ears and the passion to deliberate when there's harm, when you can't find rent or afford the rent, because the landlord wants to raise it up to meet the tax bracket that you have continued to possess? But I just hope that when I turn in this off-topic card, Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to turn in a card for item number four, since I have a chance of running back and forth. But in relation to what happened today, the suffrage that we all go through, a suffrage of defeat, a suffrage of defeat, because we can't live in Los Angeles safe and healthy. Yeah, I find it funny and stupid.
You are not on topic, Mr. Herman.
Again, when we talk about rent escrow, we're talking about waiving the illegal citations by Building and Safety, Madam Speaker, and I'm turning in my card for here.
Next speaker, Michael Hunt.
My rent is due. 498 million. Rent is due, 498 million. Get it? I think I own City Hall. Rent escrow is up. $498 million. Please pay me forward. Thank you.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, AKA Charlie.
Yes, AKA Charlie Beck, the missing police chief, who deals with housing, very much like this REAP program, except rather than take the money, they take the lives. So, look at this. Oh, we, this is really special, that we have got this meeting on REAP and chaired by the Sixth District Chairman.
Nury Martinez. So, I have to go into Nury mode and say that 2622 South Normandy, congratulations, you have passed the inspections. Seating 8123 East 194th Street, congratulations, you have successfully bribed the building inspectors concurrently. And seating 9, the great Karen Price, 5116 South Hooper Avenue. And he's also successfully passed the inspections. How do you pass inspections on property? Well, of course, you pay off somebody. Now, I don't know who this day it is. I can't figure out here. And in the motion, we should put down who they paid off to get the inspections passed, so that the public, next time when they have a violation, and they go, boom, 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 boom.
Hello?
We're the LA Building and Safety to inspect your property.
You'll say.
Nury Martinez told me to pay off building inspector who? We'll find out. So continue to pay off the building inspectors and pass. Congratulations. Thank you, Nury, for this great honor today.
Seeing no more cards on item three, Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Let's move to item four now.
Yes, Madam President, that's item four, called Special for Cards. There is a substitute motion before you.
First speaker, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns something very important. This concerns the lives of the animals that are located in this particular pound. Improvements in the animal shelter. $42,000 of improvements. They're nonsense improvements. $3,000 parking lot salaries. $13,000 parking lot gate, and $25,000 for security cameras. It's been up there for 20 years without the security. What do you, hey, you have any trouble? Just get an LAPD. They'll shoot anything black that passes by them. I'm telling you right now, this $40,000 could save the lives of many pets who are sentenced to death. And all, I guess Herb believes there are no cats there. Herb won't, he won't put up a cat for adoption. Dogs are dying, they're being executed, they're being asphyxiated horribly. And what are you spending $40,000 of the city money for? Cameras, to see if you can catch some black people there, so you can kill them. We want this money spent on the animals at the Los Angeles Animal Shelter, not for cops. You've never had a bad incident there. No one has ever gone in there, no one, and now you need security cameras. Well, focus them on the dogs and cats as they choke to death, asphyxiated in your death chamber. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Excuse me, you guys are disrupting the meeting, so you're disrupting the meeting. If you're going to be shouting out from the audience, we'll be asking you to leave if you're going to disrupt the meeting. I'd like to recognize the El Puente Learning Center is here. Let's stand up and be recognized. Are you a S.L. class from Boyle Heights? All right, thank you for visiting. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, I'd like to ask on item four, we'll bring up Wayne Spindler.
Yes, the Holocaust continues, the slaughter of animals in our shelters. All the poor doggies. And then you get the cats that get murdered. And then you get even pigs. And now, we have to pay for parking lot gates and fences, because animals drive cars, right? Of course. And then we need parking lot gates, fence, and signage. The sign should read, "Animal Shelter, Holocaust Slaughter of Animals, LA City." And then we have $25,229.54, because you got to have the 54 cents, for security cameras. I mean, my God, look at all these wonderful improvements. And we're going to bring these pets into City Hall and get them all adopted. We're going to bring them all in, not just one dog. We're going to bring in cats and guinea pigs, and even birds. We can bring in hawks. And then we can bring in deer. There's no reason why we can't save the deer. And then we have another slaughterhouse, the LA Zoo, that likes to kill elephants, but they're not going to be adopted. This city is such a great city on killing. We kill dogs, we kill cats, we kill innocent black men in Venice, just like a dog, we slaughter them just like these animals. And the difference is, is that when you take a dog's life, you don't have a civil attorney, but when you take a man's life, they super 20 million. So do not approve these improvements. Shut the animal shelters down.
Eric Previn?
Yes, it's Eric Previn, CD2 resident. This is a substitute motion, item number four, so I glanced at it quickly, and I think if I got it correct, there's a $110 discrepancy between the old one and the new one, which is obviously modest in light of the fact that it's $30,000 for some construction repairs from the Street Furniture Fund. So all looks good. The one piece that's a little bit worrisome is that this is GSD, or GS, Department of General Services will be doing the technical corrections and clarifications. And as I'm sure you've had some experience with the General Services Division, Mr. Englander, some of the technical corrections and clarifications result in further confusion. This has been the case with respect to the appraisals of our beloved city property at 4230 Coldwater Canyon in the Valley. So I would ask you, as the temporary acting council president and co-chair of the restrict public access whilst ticketing everybody for miles around initiative, I would ask you to encourage the General Services Division to provide the appraisals timely in accordance with the California Public Record. It's just appropriate, it's the way to go. I think we've all waited long enough, you know, there may be a discrepancy, there may not be a discrepancy with what some of us expect. It's all secondary. But it is our system to share those records and to make them public. So if Mr. Royster and his great team, Valerie Meloff, who certainly has done a nice job supervising Melody McCormick and David Roberts, could just simply hustle up, get their records together, put them in a little bag, or a little, we could PDF them electronically, that would be appropriate. But I really would appreciate it, and I would like to thank you for the ACE program, because I know that you personally did a lot to make sure that it could be added to the scope of work for Xerox. And Xerox, as we don't need to remind one another, has done an outstanding job of tagging various residents, both on the pedestrian level, the administrative level, and many other levels. So thank you.
Mr. Herman?
... and defeat, as Hollywood Highland John Walsh points out, regarding the suffrage of the Los Angeles Animal Shelters to abuse and transfer $42,000 for parking lot gates, fence, signage, and then another $13,400 for supplies for parking lot gate fences. That sounds like a ditto, 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 ditto. Hey, Mr. Corrigan, you listening to this? You're the budget man. And $25,000 for materials and supplies for security cameras.
Now, are we stealing the little pigs from the animal shelter? Because I like to watch Peppa Pig and Little Georgie when they say, hey, Peppa Pig, what's going on? Why are they taking the animals out of the, out of the zoo, out of the animal shelter? I don't know. Ask them. Okay, well, the rights of suffrage was permitted for women to vote, was defeated by the statewide vote. No, no, you're off subject. Go back, go back, okay?
Now, speaking here, children, as you're listening on to Peppa Pig, and all the little kittens, and all you little rabbits, and the little...
Sugar, I hope you find a home. But the various improvements of South Los Angeles Animal Shelter is very expensive. It's causing a suffrage and defeat. You're defeating the problem here. Stop wasting the taxpayers' money for fucking parking lots and save the animals. Give them away for half the cost you charge, over $100. Daniel Gus is right. You, Peppa Pig, are doing very, very bad things to us animals.
And I don't like it when you take advantage of Batman's buddies, the bats, that make the little soundless noises like this, Mr. Big Ears. You see? So, in final disclosure here, I say, stop the defeat of the South Los Angeles Animal Shelter for the annex.
Okay, that concludes the public comment portion. We have one council member on the queue. Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Colleagues, this is a amendment because there was a typographical error on the total amount of expenditures. Contrary to earlier comments, this is not a 20-year-old facility. In fact, it's so new that it's not even had a grand opening. But that's just a fact that probably got overlooked. But we certainly need the cameras to ensure that it's well-protected, because the facility is a half a block off-site of the animal shelter, which was built about two years ago, and they need the cameras to monitor the annex, which is not in a straight-line view of the facility. So I'd ask for an eye vote on this item.
Okay, thank you. And I believe we have a, an amendment that's been circulated. We're going to go ahead and vote on the amendment to be considered first, and then we'll actually vote on the amendment itself. And so, before we do that...
Sorry. Yeah, just on this, on this item, is anyone here from Animal Services? No? Okay. I, I just had a question on how the shift of animal control officers from the harbor is going to impact South LA's animal shelter annex, and if these improvements are going to help with the shift of personnel. But we can...
This is merely to give the people that are assigned there, the dispatcher...
Right.
... a camera view of a site that's a half a block away, so they don't have to have personnel doing station security. And there, it's a brand-new facility, hasn't opened yet...
Got it.
... and it's an annex to the original facility.
Very good. I, I support this. I would just, I'm going to work with Ms. Barnett here on her shift of deployment of animal control officers. But I, obviously, this has nothing to do with, with that shift of deployment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So to consider the amendment before us first, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And now we'll actually vote on the item itself. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we'll go ahead and send that forthwith, per Mr. Parks's suggestion on that. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, would council like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Yes, we'll go ahead and do that now.
Very good. Blumenthal, Bonnabus, Geno, Sidio, England, Fuentes, Puzar, Caress, Corrigan, Labas, Martinez, Ferro, Parks, Price, Wesson, 11 members present. And according, Mr. President, that brings us to item number five. It's an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, thank, and an item, a public hearing has been held?
That is correct, sir.
Great. Okay, so we'll go ahead and file the cards accordingly on that item. And we'll file those. Thank you. And with that, go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, forthwith, without objection, that'll be the order per Mr. Buscagno.
Very good, sir. Would council like to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Very good.
That takes us to...
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, we'll go ahead and consider those posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, thank you. The desk is clear. So, do we have any announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? Okay, adjourning motions? If we can all rise for adjourning motions? Starting first to my left, seeing none. To my right, Councilmember Parks. If we can please ask everyone to please rise for adjourning motions, and we'll start off with Councilmember Bernard Parks, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I asked, we adjourn in memory of Sandra Foster, who was born August 1934, passed away at the age of 80. Ms. Foster was born to her parents, Oscar and Geraldine, in Chicago, Illinois. She's the eldest of two children, and she graduated from Hyde Park High School before moving to Los Angeles at the age of 17. A year later, she met her husband, Richard. Sandra received a Bachelor's of Arts Elementary Education from Cal State LA in 1956. She began her teaching career at Trinity Elementary in '57. She earned a Master's Degree in Public Management and Administration in 1976 from Pepperdine. She went on to teach 38 years and retired at Dublin Elementary, now known as Tom Bradley Environmental Science and Humanities Charter Magnet School in 1995. Ms. Foster motivated, encouraged, and changed the lives of thousands of children over 38 years she taught in the community. Even after retirement, she stayed active by taking on substitute work. She is well-respected and loved by many in her career, from students, fellow teachers, and administrators alike. She's truly enjoyed her life by spending time with her family, friends, traveling, and being an active member of Delta Sigma Theta for over 50 years. She wore her red proud and mentored many of the younger members. She was involved with the Ladera Senior Group, Friendly Educators, and St. Bernadette Senior Group. She leaves behind her son, Rodney, and a host of family members. Her services will be held tonight as the wake between 3:00 and 8:00 at the Holy Cross Cemetery in Culver City. The funeral will be celebrated May 9 at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. Any others? I have one, colleagues. On May 1, George William Hall, a World War II pilot and a father, the father, of Northridge City Little League, passed away. George was born on August 10, 1920, and he flew commercially for Northwest Airlines. He was a test pilot for the Lockheed L-1011, and he was, he volunteered many hours at the Travelers Aid Society booth at LAX. He loved everything about flying, especially the views. George, a volunteer at Northridge Little League for over 50 years, started at Northridge Little League as a coach for his sons and joined the board of directors. He held almost every board position over the years. He maintained the fields, installed scoreboards, fixed plumbing, irrigation, and wiring. He helped build the boardroom and the equipment room, ran the snack stand, coordinated with companies as they made equipment, food, and monetary donations to the Northridge Little League. Well into his 80s, you can actually find him riding around in his Gator tractor with a long succession of rescued German Shepherds by his side. In lieu of flowers, he would prefer donations made to the German Shepherd Rescue at www sheprescue.org. In honor of the father of the Northridge Little League, the Northridge City Little League names the field complex in his honor, the George Hall Field Complex. Although George was perceived in his death by his wife of 56 years and his two sons, he leaves behind his loving German Shepherd, Jesse, and a family of 1,200 Little Leaguers who will never forget him. On a personal note, when I started working with Councilman Greg Smith, George, he was a pistol. I'd need come into the office and put his demands down all the time of what he needed for the kids, what he needed for the fields, and it didn't matter. And in fact, the fields were built, built originally as Hal Burnson approved a project adjacent to the fields. They were supposed to build homes on where these fields now stand. And Councilman Burnson said, you're going to build all these new homes. The kids growing up in these homes, where are they going to play Little League? No, you're going to take 30 of these homes out and you're going to put fields in instead. And he did. And George came in and told me the story about how the HOA there would constantly complain about the kids hitting the balls over the wall into their yards. He would often show up at the HOA board meetings yelling and screaming at them that they were there first, not the homes. And it's about the children. And a couple broken windows, they'll just have to live with that. The, the HOA actually wanted to sue George and the Little League to erect a big net to stop the balls from flying over at a cost of nearly $80,000. And George said that every dollar he earns, or he raises, goes right back directly into the fields and the uniforms and the equipment for the kids, and particularly for the ones that can't afford it. And a fence doesn't put another kid on the, on the field. And so he refused to do it. So George and I worked together and raised the money and identified the funds to put that up. And I remember the next day after we actually put up the new fence, George, you'd think you'd come into the office and say, I'm so grateful we were able to end that long battle and fight with the HOA, and I appreciate it. No, he comes in and says, well, that was yesterday. What are you doing for me today? We have new signups and new kids, we need new uniforms. That's not going to fly tomorrow. We can't think about yesterday. We've got to think about the kids for tomorrow. That was George. May he rest in peace, and may all the thousands and thousands of kids that created these lifelong memories always remember George in their hearts. Thank you, colleagues. We are adjourned. Be safe.